All right. We welcome the order. Good evening and welcome to this special meeting of the Mercer Island City Council, January 6, 2015. Could you call the roll?
Councilmember Debbie Burtland?
Here.
Councilmember Jane Braun?
Here.
Councilmember Mike Cyril?
Here.
Councilmember Benson Wong?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dan Grous?
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett?
Here, thank you. Mike, you've got a new computer.
That's my son's computer.
Ah, that's fancy. Well, good evening. Welcome to this special meeting. A few comments I'll give before we get started. It's actually going to be just a repeat of things I said last night, so if you were here, you've already heard it, but for those who weren't, first time. Eleven candidates applied for this open seat. Tana was just here last night saying her goodbyes, and we were saying our goodbyes to her. Shame to see her go, but she has moved on to bigger and better things, and so an opportunity awaits for one of you. And so, we certainly welcome the applicants, all of whom have interesting and powerful resumes. It's great to see. This community is well-served by having folks who are willing to step up, and we are very grateful to you for putting your time, your energy, and yourselves out there on the line to do this. So, thank you. A few sort of practical notes. First of all, it's announced in the materials that swearing-in would occur at the next meeting for whoever is selected. That is an option if the person who's selected chooses to, but what we found in the past is it's a little bit better if the swearing-in occurs at the following regular meeting in February, which allows the person who's selected to have their family present for that. So, the intervening meeting is the planning session at which no formal actions are taken, and therefore, there is no problem with the person being present at the planning session without having been formally sworn in. Second, the question's been asked, is it permissible to reach out to councilmembers and have one-on-one conversations with them? The answer is absolutely. We would expect you to want to do that. Councilmembers may equally reach out to you. You can reach out to as many as you like. They can reach out to as many as they like. It'll all come down to what your schedules are over the coming days and how that all fits together. So, no holds barred in terms of getting together, having conversations. It allows us to go deeper into understanding you, what makes you tick, and trying to understand how you'd fit into the council. Finally, I didn't make notes on this, but I thought it important to point out, you know, I know you're here tonight probably with butterflies in the stomach about having to stand up and talk to us. I think it's important for all of us to recognize that we are up here right now, but it wasn't that long ago for all of us that we were out there where you are in one form or another. Except maybe Dan. Yeah, I was going to say, he's practically been here forever. But Mike and I are tied on that score. And soon enough, we will be back in those seats to one way or another. It's a revolving door doing this job. We all serve the community in one fashion or another, and at the moment, we're serving here, trying to do our best. You're trying to do your best, but we're all part of this community, and I would just encourage you to remember, we're just some other citizens, and we'll do our best to pick somebody who we think will be a good fit, but at the end of the day, we're all just Mercer Island residents, and we all ought to be happy that we are part of this great community. Okay, tonight, I think the purple sheet describes how we're going to do this.
Maybe, Mr. Mayor, if you can go over how the purple sheet was developed?
Sure. So, first of all, the candidate speeches are something that has been done for several previous appointment processes. If the agenda bill is correct, it's been done three times previously this way, and the thought had been to do a random draw of folks so that it didn't end up being alphabetical order with the, as a last name passive. I always enjoyed alphabetical order when I was growing up, but you know, it's not so great for the folks whose last name starts with Z. So, we thought doing that randomized fashion made sense. We, in the previous session, had the option of having councilmembers ask questions of candidates when they were up, and I at least, and I think others, found that awkward because you ended up in this position of persons up here, they've got there a lot of time. If you ask a question, are you interrupting their time or are you not? We didn't really address whether that was true or not. We also got into the, well, if you've asked this person, why haven't you asked another person, and how does that all fit? So, in order to sort of work around that and do something a little bit more, I don't know, manageable, what I suggested, what we ended up doing was having a debate last night about how to manage councilmember questions to candidates above and beyond the three-to-five-minute talks in a way that would sort of be fair to everyone. And that's what led us to councilmembers drafting a number of additional questions, from which the city manager picked six, and you will be pulled up to a table or two that we will set up after the initial talks and asked to address the questions that come within the panel section that your name falls on, on the page. Mike, does that capture?
Just to confirm or refute, the panels were randomly selected and the questions out of the panels were randomly selected?
Yeah, they, how did you guys? Yeah, what we did is the order of candidates was randomly selected, and then the panels were randomly selected as well to assign them to the question sets.
Okay. Councilmembers, any other questions before we dive into this? Or other comments you'd like to make before we dive into this? Okay. So, with that, we're going to go ahead and launch into the three-to-five-minute speeches. We will not interrupt you while you're speaking. There's a light set up on the, at the podium there, as well as, is there a timer as well? I think there is. It tells you how long you've got. You're welcome to go less than three minutes if you like, but you've got up to five minutes. And, go ahead.
Are we televised now?
I don't know. Oh wait, yeah, we are. So, yes. Anyone else? Okay, let's go. Matthew Tardif, you are first up. Welcome.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Matthew Tardif. I'm a resident of Mercer Island. I live at 8804 Southeast 54th Street, just across from Island Park School. I have three children in the school, two children in the school and a third child who's here at Country Village Day School. I relocated here a year ago last August. As I said, you know, I grew up in New Hampshire, so I'm not a local, I'm a transplant. You're probably relieved to know that I'm not a Californian or I'm not one of those people. In New Hampshire, the people that relocate from Massachusetts, we call them flatlanders. I don't know what the names are for transplants here. My background is that of a schoolteacher predominantly for the last 12 years. The majority that was overseas, teaching internationally in South Africa, Egypt, Kurdistan, northern Iraq. It's been in the news lately, but it was a bit more sedate when I was there. And prior to that, I had a variety of different jobs predominantly in health and safety-related fields. So, that's a little bit about my background as far as work and employment. I currently own a home in Johannesburg. We're in the process of selling, which brings us to the possibility of committing to Mercer Island for a long-term duration. First impressions, I'm very impressed with Mercer Island itself, the environment, the people, the sense of community that I have. The obvious features are the wide-open space, which reminds me of New Hampshire. It was kind of a strategy of mine to choose Mercer Island. It sounded in its description, without having seen it first, very comparable to Lakeland of Saki. So, came here, and first year, I would say, was largely just getting ourselves situated as a family, securing employment. I worked as a schoolteacher in Bellevue. And now that we're a bit more established, I feel compelled to get more involved in the community, something that I've done pretty much everywhere that I've lived. I've worked in Johannesburg as a non-resident, serving on a community policing forum. I've obviously been involved in the schools that I've worked at and the extended communities and the international communities. And everywhere I've ever lived, I've tried to make an impact on my immediate neighbors or the wider community. And this goes all the way back through high school, college level, getting involved in fraternities, getting involved in, and essentially improving upon what was already established everywhere I've gone, and looking at it and saying, how can I get involved and what can I do? We currently have a president that was a community organizer. It's gone pretty well for him, so I thought, let me get in a more formal environment, maybe serve as this vacant council position. I thought perhaps I'd be a walk-on, that no one has any interest in this, but I'm happy to see that there's a lot of other people interested, and I'm sure they're all here for the whopping $200 salary, which shows you, you know, a year ago, maybe 200 bucks gets you to Portland. I think 200 bucks this year, you might even get to Crescent City or even meet the California border. I hope my vision is to be effectively someone that who can commit to my time, commit to new ideas, not that your ideas are old, specifically, Mr. Grous.
Oh, excuse me.
But, you know, maybe because I've lived overseas and I've lived in different communities and seen different places in the country, that I might have some different perspective. Like I said, I have the time, I have the desire, and you know, I hope I can make an impact here. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Sure.
You know, Wendy, before, let me just, any burning questions amongst the candidates that we should address before we, that I should have asked for before we got going? Okay, good. With that, Wendy, come on up.
Can I just say I'm so happy to go second? Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome back. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you and welcome by my other candidates. It's an honor and a privilege and a little humbling to be here. So, for the record, I'm Wendy Reiko. I live at Florida Way East Mercer Way, down on the east side of the island, and I'm going to tell you who I am, why I'm here, why I'm going to serve on the council, and kind of what I think about our community issues. So, who am I? I've lived on Mercer Island for 10 years. My husband and I moved here with two small children for the incredible school system, the safe neighborhoods, the beautiful environment, and the easy access to Seattle on the east side for our jobs. I'm the mom of two teenagers in Mercer Island Schools. I'm the wife, I'm the sister, I'm an employee, I'm a community volunteer, I'm a friend, and a neighbor. Like most of us, I wear many hats and have a variety of responsibilities. So, why would I want to add to that plate and join the city council? Well, I want to serve on the city council because I care about Mercer Island's people, places, and prosperity. I have a 20-year professional background in public affairs and community relations that I think would serve islanders and city government well as we work to keep our city safe, vibrant, and ready for the region's growth. I'm a good collaborator. I do homework on the issues I'm involved with. I think carefully about what outcomes might be best when considering alternatives, and include others in identifying options and goals. I also listen with an open mind and strive to stay focused on what's achievable when making decisions. I think it's especially important to be thoughtful and deliberate when significant choices have to be made that have long-term impacts. Most importantly, I've found that process matters in decisions, especially when there are a variety of opinions, stakeholders, and cost implications to consider. I think this approach to the city's work would be of value to our citizens and to the city council. So, what are my views on community issues? In my job at Puget Sound Energy, in my volunteer work on the Mercer Island Utility Board, and in my efforts at parenting two teens, my consistent and ever-present focus is on safety. Along those lines, I think providing for public safety and fundamental community services are the most important responsibilities of local government. Beyond that, I also think it's critical that we as a community work together to maintain Mercer Island's quality of life as a premier residential neighborhood. Together, we can address and manage the emerging changes, challenges, and opportunities that we face in preserving our unique island lifestyle in the midst of our region's growth, especially all the potential impacts Mercer Island at this growth brings. So, while safety and community development issues are of particular interest to me, I also care about our parks and open space, our Mercer Way bike routes, our community center programming, and our Fourth of July fireworks, just to name a few other issues. Overall, I would say I'm a gentlest with broad interests in serving our community. So, in closing, I just want to say that I think we can all agree this is a fortunate place to call home for all of us. This is a great city with safe neighborhoods, excellent schools, beautiful open spaces, engaged citizens, well-loved community programs, and easy access to our region's major employment centers. I'm proud of this community. I'm proud to be a part of this community. We take honor in our history, appreciate our present, and have great faith for our future. It would be my privilege to join you on the city council and bring my professional experience, interpersonal skills, and tenured islander perspective to our city government work. Thank you for your consideration. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. So, Carl, we were trying to throw them off, the yellow light came on at three minutes? Yeah, so that's, is that what will happen for each?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's just warning that they have two minutes left to finish up.
They're three at that point, right? It's coming, counting down from five.
Oh, shoot. Okay, I'll change it to two.
Okay.
Yep.
Ralph, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and city councilmembers. My name's Ralph Jorgensen. As someone who had the experience and opportunity of growing up on this island and returning 10 years ago with my wife and two daughters, I'm fairly vested here. I have a continuous record of community service, including many fun seasons of coaching youth t-ball, baseball, I'm sorry, softball, and soccer, serving on the boards of the Sunny Bean Preschool, the Mercer Island Country Club, and the Mercer Island Craft Guild, co-chairing the Last School Bond and Levy Campaign, and serving on a review committee for Seattle Children's Hospital. It would be a privilege to contribute to the leadership of this island. The skills that I would bring to the council, I've broken out into three. First, my experience in engineering, sciences, and management have afforded me the opportunities to break down complex issues. Coupled with communication skills, this has been very helpful in working with teams to solve problems and to reach consensus. Secondly, is an appreciation for the multiple points of view on this island and the public process. With our 22,000 residents here, we will always have a diversity of opinions and perspectives. During the recent CNETS campaign, I had the privilege to interact with many different island groups, including Provis, Rovere Colonnus, the Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce, Mercer Island Preschool Association, Rida Groups, firefighters, and the Mercer Island Clergy Association, as well as local PTA units. And through this process, I really have come to really more fully appreciate the number of viewpoints here. Lastly, my responsibilities in operating businesses as well as managing federal contracts and grants, I think would be helpful for the city budgeting process. I have a great appreciation for the accountability and responsibility that should be afforded taxpayers' funds. Regarding the city priorities, as I see it, I think public safety is my highest priority, including police, fire, traffic safety, and emergency planning, and ensuring that these services are funded, staffed, and equipped as necessary. And this also includes continuing the Safe Rides to Schools program to maximize the safety for our children walking and biking to the new elementary school that will open in fall of 2016. And the next priority is preserving and continuing to foster our precious community, and continuing the city's investment in our parks and open spaces, our family neighborhoods, youth and family services, the town center, and the city's synergistic relationship with the school district. Current issues include the town center development. I favor the ongoing public process efforts to develop a revised vision for the development. The Mercer Island Center for the Arts, I support the council's recent decision in interest of MICA's potential use of the former Recycle Center. Islander transit and town center parking, I agree with abandoning the proposed park-and-ride at the Community Center Hill, and applaud the city's staff efforts for going through a vetting process of other sites. And it was encouraging news in December to hear that RosDOT has suspended the environmental review regarding tolling I-90, and I favor continuing to watch that and utilize that multi-pronged defense if necessary in the future. And the next priority is maintaining our city's infrastructure. We need to continue to evaluate our water distribution system, working with that Confluence Report, the city staff, and consultants to ensure that our distribution system is in line with the best practices so to, we can eliminate any future risks. To conclude, I look forward to contributing to the city council, which serves in a very thoughtful, responsive, consistent, and transparent manner that affords many opportunities for public input and discussion, with a vision towards preserving our community, seizing opportunities to enhance our community going forward. And lastly, ensuring that our city continues to offer the excellent services to the entire community, including our 6,000 children and our 5,000 seniors. Thank you for this time and consideration.
Thank you. Megan?
Hello, councilmembers. It's nice to see you guys again. It seems like we were just here. First, I'd like to start off with my name, I guess, for the record. I'm Megan Copperson-Servo, and I live in the First Hill neighborhood at 3621 73rd Avenue Southeast. Wanted to thank you guys for your service to the city, and also thank you for this opportunity to interview for a council vacancy. I was born and raised in Seattle and moved to Mercer Island seven years ago. In that time, I've been involved in my community, explored the island's parks and open spaces, frequented Mercer Island businesses, participated in community meetings and discussions, and shown off the island to my friends and family. For the past 10 years, I've worked as a public servant for both King County and the city of Seattle, working in both the executive and legislative branches of government. I'm familiar with the work of local government and knowledgeable on the best practices for communicating that work to residents. Throughout my time at the county and the city, I've cultivated a diverse and relevant skill set, nurtured relationships throughout the region, and worked successfully in highly political environments, sometimes under intense scrutiny. I hope to utilize these skills and relationships when working with our neighboring governments and advocating on behalf of Mercer Island and our neighbors. In my seven years on the island, I've seen Mercer Island grow and change. I've seen an expanded park-and-ride, development of the farmer's market, apartment and condo buildings built, and a lot of turnover in our island restaurants. As Mercer Island's population dramatically increases in the coming years, we as a city need to embrace those changes, looking to the past for best practices and lessons learned, while keeping true to Mercer Island's core values and moving the city forward, always with the best interest of islanders at the forefront of our decisions. I hope to influence this work as a council member. When I'm not at my day job at the city of Seattle, I run an online baby gift business called Little Butch's Bakery. Small business is a passion of mine, and as a council member, I'm very interested in working with the chamber to continue the success of Mercer Island businesses and help play a role in bringing new businesses to the island. I believe there are many opportunities to engage business owners and expand some of our existing programs, helping to keep islanders here for their shopping and dining needs. Mercer Island is a unique place, a balance of small, close-knit communities, an excellent public school system, and the convenience of close proximity to two of Washington's largest cities. As Mercer Island and the cities around us continue to grow, it's essential that we grow diligently, maintaining the character of our community while working with residents to find solutions that meet our shared vision. I would be honored to focus on any and all local and regional issues. In fact, I have, from advocating for voting at King County elections to working, I'm sorry, to promoting nine separate agendas from nine separately elected councilmembers at the city of Seattle. My current passions best fit with transportation-related topics, specifically with I-90 tolling, transit integration, and finding park-and-ride alternatives, as well as the physical development of our town center and economic development of the businesses there. Finally, I'm interested in taking my civic involvement on the island to the next level and giving back to this community in the role of councilmember. I hope to play a more concerted role in helping the city thrive as a wonderful community to work, live, and visit. This is a wonderful opportunity for the right person to join your team to do good things for Mercer Island. I'm among some excellent candidates here tonight, and I believe that I am that right person. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity, councilmembers. My name is Joel Rocks. I live at 7635 Southeast 29th Street. I'm currently the Chair of the Open Space Conservancy Trust and Deputy Chair of the Mercer Island Library Board. In previous years, it's been my privilege to serve as President of the Mercer Island Farmer's Market, as well as the President of the Friends of the Mercer Island Library. In addition to that, I've served as a volunteer for several Mercer Island community groups, including the Committee for Mercer Island Public Schools and the Town Center Visioning Group. I've also ended up serving on several regional and state government and nonprofit organizations in leadership positions. Since becoming a resident of Mercer Island, I've ended up learning quite a bit about the community and really enjoying the high quality of life that we all enjoy living here. One of the major things that I've ended up discovering is how fragile that high quality of life can be and how important it is for us to constantly remain vigilant in order to make sure that these values are constantly being renewed. I've worked very hard in order to build new island resources, such as the farmer's market, as well as sustain and renew such existing ones as the library, the open space, as well as the public schools that we enjoy. I am very interested in serving as a councilmember because I want to end up participating at the highest levels in our community and making decisions that will end up affecting the local government. the lives of all the residents here and making sure that the values and the high quality of life that we've all come to enjoy continue for not only the near future but also for the long term. I am really honored to be able to apply for this position and to be considered, and thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Terry.
Good evening, Mayor Bassett, council members. I'm Terry Potmeyer. I'm very pleased and humbled to be before you tonight as an applicant for the appointment to the open council seat. Thank you for this opportunity to tell you about my desire to join you in serving our community. Our family lived to Mercer Island in 1984, drawn by the twin promise of great schools and a great community, a city that was safe, filled with parks, well-run, and supported by a caring and available citizenry. For the 30 years we've lived here, those twin promises have been fulfilled, thanks to two important groups, very capable and committed staff members in both the city and the school district, as well as the many, many people who have served our community through important public service. My application for this position is motivated, in the very simplest terms, by my desire to continue to fulfill our community's promise, serving on the council to ensure that our city remains strong while creatively and productively responding to the challenges that face us. Commitment to public service is a guiding principle in my life. It has inspired me over the years to serve the community in many ways, including on the five PTAs, beginning, of course, as so many of us do with the Preschool Association, on the Schools Foundation Board, the School Board, the Community Fund Board, on numerous school bond and levy campaigns, the Mercer Island Youth and Family Services Foundation Board, the Park Levy Campaign, our city's recent 50th anniversary celebration, and in many other ways. This service has taught me important skills that I can in turn bring to the council's work, working as part of an effective team, the importance of collaboration and compromise, the ability to engage diverse viewpoints in decision-making, and encouraging people to participate, to volunteer, or to donate to support their community. Professionally, I have served as the CEO of a large human services organization, Friends of Youth, and have demonstrated an ability to deliver on strategic goals, to create, balance, and manage a complex budget, to respond to changing community needs, and to facilitate difficult community conversations. These skills will be important to successfully serving on the council, no matter the topic or issue, whether it be sewer upgrades, balancing the budget, or deciding on some tower placements. I have particular expertise to bring to the council on human service issues, on youth issues, and on education issues. I served a two-year term on the Eastside Human Services Forum Board, and then in year two, of a four-year term on the Board of the Puget Sound Educational Service District. I have direct experience with youth and family services in particular. At Friends of Youth, we delivered those services for three school district communities, Issaquah, Smolwami Valley, and Overview. I understand the importance of counseling, parenting, and prevention for youth and families, and I am an incredibly strong supporter of the excellent services being provided by Mercer Island Youth and Family Services for the members of our community. I've seen firsthand the importance of also working regionally to find the best solutions to complex issues. I've worked for over three years on King County's plan to end youth homelessness, a problem that cannot be solved in one jurisdiction or one city but must be solved by working together. I strongly support our city's continued involvement and participation in these important regional conversations in ways such as participation in Arch and Sound Cities, and would be very interested in contributing my expertise to this work. My application has not been motivated by a particular issue or concern, but by a belief that as a council member, I can be of service, and I can help our community to continue to thrive. I believe I have the right skills, a broad understanding of the issues and framework confronting us, and the depth of experience to hit the ground running, contributing immediately to the council's work, which I think is an important benefit with so many important decisions confronting the council in the coming year. I sincerely and humbly ask you to select me for this position. In closing, I would like to express my appreciation to both my fellow applicants and to each of you. To have 11 applicants for an open council position is inspiring and very encouraging, and I am honored to be one of your members. To all of you on the council, thank you for your service and for the careful consideration you are giving to the selection of the next member of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmen and fellow candidates. There are a variety of reasons why I would like to serve on the city council. Some are clear: my desire to continue serving my community and belief that I'm well-suited to do such, but it is the less obvious causes I believe in many ways more important. When I saw the council vacancy in the report, I was surprised at how instantly and instinctively I knew I would apply. I've always been interested and kept abreast of what is going on back home, but where I stand before you now is a function of a long relationship with Mercer Island. Growing up here, venturing off many times on many adventures, and now having returned gives me a unique perspective on the changes that have occurred and what they may mean for the future of our community. At times, I feel only slightly removed from the teenager who was working over those, having run-ins with the MIPD, and who utilized Crest Learning Center to finish high school because my academic career had been less than stellar. Whether or not I chose to accept it at the time, the community laid a foundation in me which brought me back here as a veteran, Columbia University graduate, property owner, and employee of Starbucks, and for this, I am grateful. I bring to the council the instinct which a native has, but also the diverse skills of a varied background. My numerous transitions from Mercer Island to the Army, from Iraq to New York, from the government to Starbucks necessitated that I integrate past experience to current use. I accomplish this by distilling problems to a common core, one which made situations relatable to one another without many of the contextual similarities we often rely. This ability to adapt and seek common causes is my greatest strength. I also bring the hard skills of emergency management. A considerable amount of my career is spent working in the safety and security sphere, an inarguably important space, which society is increasingly expecting its local government to be versed in. Much of my experience has been in high-threat areas much different from Mercer Island, but unfortunately, some tragic incidences transcend the day-to-day safety of our community. My experience makes me especially qualified to discuss the what-ifs that I'm uncomfortable necessarily to address in regards to maintaining the safety which the island is known. I don't have the political experience of many in this room, nor do I have a particular cause which I intend to leave my mark on. What I bring to the council is a fresh perspective grounded in a long history to the multitude of issues, big and small, that the island faces. Mercer Island is changing, and it is important that the council represent not only those who actively participate in its civil space and turn out for elections, but all residents. There is a new generation returning to the island, and also with town center development, individuals new to our community. I am of this generation and believe that its representation on the council would be an asset to the island. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me, Eric council members, and thank you all. My name is Darren Gold, and I'm here applying for the empty council member position. My goal is to continuously improve with you, the residents, the businesses, and the visitors here, Mercer Island and what it is. My focus areas are generally three: the children, the environment, and sustainability. For me, the children are personal. I moved here to Mercer Island about a year and a half ago for the express purpose of my children. I'm here for them, the good schools, the good parks, and it's a safe place to raise a family. And on the city council, I hope to continue the good efforts of the city council. I've been particularly impressed with all the things that I've seen just in my year and a half here: the new play equipment over at Luther Irving Park, the new exercise equipment at Mercydale, the new elementary school that's being built two blocks away from me. Also, I'm impressed by the public-private partnerships you guys, the council and the city have been trying to put together. For instance, Jay Mark has the construction area at the other park for the children to work, or teenagers to do some construction over at the park in the central part of town. The second area I'm concerned with is the environment. It's very important to take the environment into account when I'm growing first Mercer Island and to do this in a sustainable way, whether it be open spaces, power, or whatever. And I know Mayor Bassett's very involved in this issue. He's already come out in favor of governing at least plans for the environment, as well as co-authored an op-ed with several other mayors about protecting the environment through energy. The last area is sustainability. It's clear Mercer Island is going to grow, and it's important that we do it in a sustainable way, keeping an eye on what people come to Mercer Island for: schools that are first class, and also the community feel. For instance, the farmer's market that's already been talked about, the concerts in the park. And it's important to work with the residents, businesses, and visitors, again, to continuously improve Mercer Island. I just want to say I was particularly impressed with Councilman Long when he came by my house before the vote and wanted to know exactly what I thought. I thought that was a really nice thing about Mercer Island, the council, and actually for the people that want to come by, actually came by the houses. My experience, I've been a patent attorney for around 10 years, and in there, I work with a lot of different groups, both in my company and outside. In my company, I have to deal with, I work with executives, engineers, and managers, and other lawyers to create and improve processes, non-disclosure agreement processes, open-source processes. I'm also very used to working with people that may not be in my group and I have to negotiate with, such as in licensing agreements or getting teams prepared for licensing agreements, and then working with the other side to come to an agreement that everybody can live with and be happy with. If I'm brought to the council, the groups I'd be most interested in joining are those that Mercer Island has a more critical interest in, or those where Mercer Island would affect the Puget Sound community. For instance, power projects, such as Mayor Bassett's brought up, and also transit, as Mercer Island is a very critical point between Bellevue and Seattle. The last thing I just want to bring up is diversity. As a one resident of Mercer Island, I bring a different viewpoint than most of the members on the city council, and I think it's an important one to have. And thank you for your time, and I hope to receive your votes.
Thank you. Carl.
Yeah, I should read my speech.
Welcome.
Carl Silverberg, 9571 Southeast 43rd Street. I think I'm going to use my time rather than telling you how wonderful I am and everything I've done, and sort of talk about the Mercer Island that could be of the future. Obviously, thank you very much for your time. One more night away from your family. I'd also like to thank everybody who applied tonight. Applying for public service, putting your name and your face out there, it's not easy. It's not easy knocking on doors. It's not easy asking people for money, especially family, friends. So, I applaud everybody. We have a historic opportunity here to remake Mercer Island. Over the course of the next 10 years, the town center has the opportunity to be the focal point of the community, not just a place where people go and shop, but a place that draws people in, is a magnet for everybody, young and old, people with families, people without families, and people who live downtown and people who don't. And that's something that's going to come along, not just once in a lifetime, but once in a few decades, a wonderful opportunity. I mean, think about a Saturday night, you're walking downtown, and kids are riding their bicycles, teens are doing whatever they do, but they're doing that. And families are walking, shopping, people are eating, and it's all focused on a place where everyone can congregate. Again, a magnet for everybody. And that's not the easiest thing in the world to do, because not everybody is going to agree on how to do it. One of the toughest things to do is to figure out a way to get everybody to buy in, listen to what they're saying, and somehow get people to agree to move towards that common goal. I know, I've been doing that for 25 years, and it ain't easy. One of the ways to do it is to be a lot more proactive, knocking the way the government operates, emails, newsletters, that's wonderful, that's informational. Getting out and going to Aljoya Senior Center, talking with people, setting up something in a QFC, a Starbucks, going to a book club, synagogues, churches, any kind of community activities where people are, that's where you go. Have to be proactive and get out, because we're not interested in the 20% who are vocal. It's the 80% who are too busy with other things in their life to be able to respond to those things. Social media is wonderful for a particular group of people. For everybody else, you've got to find ways to reach out to them. And the real trick in doing all this is to do it in a way that increases density and doesn't increase the carbon footprint. Would it be nice if after everything was done downtown, and people were happy and walking around, and the housing was there, that we could turn around and say, and other people could say, "Wow, they did that on Mercer Island, we could do that here." And they could. I have some other good news. I'll let you have the balance of my time.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Well, thank you for having me. My name is Andrew Lamb. I am a resident for the past four and a half years on the island. I live at 6216 East Mercer Way, and I am the father of four kids, and they're a big part of the reason, like many of the other candidates, that I've applied for this position. Initially, I was drawn to the island for the amazing public schools, the amazing community that's here, and the open spaces, the safety, all the things that everybody else has already talked about. You know, it's a real common theme here for a reason, and I'm really excited about the possibility of being able to contribute to this. So, when I'm thinking about the island itself, I guess I've been a resident in the creative Seattle area for a long time, moved away for a while, then came back. I was drawn to the unique character of the island compared to other areas in the region because of all these things we've mentioned, and I'm now looking at the possibility of making these contributions, of having an impact. I'm not a typical guy that has a lot of qualifications related to city experience and governmental background, but I have some experience coming into new situations where I'll bring a new perspective on things. And as someone who's got young kids, I'm here for the long haul and looking forward to making an impact going forward in the future.
Okay, sure. Thanks. Thank you. Steve. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bassett. I'm Steve Marshall. I applied for a position on the council because I believe I can provide experience, public policy contacts, and the ability to work with people at the state, regional, community level, to help get things done the right way on behalf of our Mercer Island community, and to help preserve the character as well as the reliability of the island. I work closely with most of you. I feel I know all of you fairly well, starting about two years ago on the I-90 tolling issues. It was said then that tolling was inevitable, and the best that we could do would be to mitigate some of the harm that would come to the community, in fact, a lot of the harm, by, for example, limiting the tolling just the one way. I took a different position on that. Mercer Island has a lot of talented people, engaged citizens on the I-90 project and other things. I met and joined with several groups to find a way to stop tolling. Some of them were attorneys that helped research whether a federal interstate highway could be told to fund an underfunded state route. Others were environmental experts. Some worked hard to get the word out and create pressure on the federal and state officials. I went down to Olympia, and I testified at the House Transportation Committee, including the day that several of you also went down and testified. the day that several of you also went down and testified. I think it's fair to say, you probably all recall, that we didn't get such a great reception from most of the House committee members. I then went over to the Senate side, and I met with the people there at the Senate Transportation Committee, and I drafted a proviso, which provided that the Washington State Department of Transportation had to do a full environmental impact statement and do a full study of the options, as opposed to just tolling. That fortunately slowed things down, and as we heard earlier this past year, that's been put on hold, tolling has. But I think if we don't find a way to provide the funding for finishing 520, the issue will come back up. I think we have to be prepared. I've served on the Municipal League Foundation Board, still am. I'm on the transportation issues committees of the Municipal League, and past chair of the Municipal League. And what we do when we rate candidates is we look for people who study the issues hard, that know them, but work well with other people to get things done for the greater good of the community. I believe in that approach, I believe in collaboration, I believe in getting consensus, I believe in getting things done the right way. I have a lot of contacts because of that work with the Municipal League and the other work that I've done at all different levels that we're going to be having to work with closely the next year, not only at the state level with the Governor's Office and Legislature, but with the Puget Sound Regional Council, Sound Transit, King County Metro. I've worked hard on a lot of issues, dealing with all those issues that will come up from those agencies, where that's the bus turnarounds, the center lane issues, Sound Transit, parking. I'm also a member, as you probably all know, of the Planning Commission. There are a lot of issues that come up with the comprehensive plan, about issues about how we're going to develop the island. And I think the best thing that we can do is to be, as we've tried to do on the Planning Commission, good listeners to the community, to preserve the character and the livability of the community in line with what people want to have done on this island. There are seven members of the council, and I think that I could provide that outreach capability to public policy to help you get things done in the next couple of challenging years. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I have a couple of observations first before we go on. The first is, I mentioned that we all were where you are not too long ago, and I guess to drill down just a little bit on that, when I was where you are, I was a very reluctant and not very good public speaker. And it is shocking what a skilled group of orders you guys are, so I am very impressed, and I'm sure the rest of the council is, your articulateness and what you've brought to this. The second observation I'd make is, this community's got a deep bench. It occurs to me that this council could sort of all slide right out, and we could slide seven of you in, and this community would be well-served. Unfortunately, we're only picking one, but you're a strong group, and I think we really should be thankful for the quality of folks who are signing up for this. So, thank you all for what you've done so far in speaking. We are, so hopefully the moment of butterflies is now behind you, because the rest of it's going to be a little more relaxed. We're going to take a 10-minute break, chance to stretch, chance to rearrange things, and then we will come back to do the panel part of this, which will be a little more informal. So, with that, I'll come back at 7:01.
Okay, so, we have to figure out exactly how we're going to do this, because I had one thought, and now Dan's throwing a different thought at me, we've got to figure it out. So just bear with us for a moment as we figure out how we're doing this.
Counselor.
Yeah, exactly, a counsel muddling around and not knowing what it's doing. My thought had been three minutes to answer both questions, and we'd just run through the group, and you'd tackle both of them, you could spend one minute on one, two minutes on the other, 30 seconds on one, or two and a half on the other. You're suggesting that better to do one question all the way through?
Well, just in fairness to the candidates, so the same, so first time around, the first person isn't just the first person, the first person's the last person on the second question, just they don't have, I mean, that's just to make it fair to them, so.
About a minute and a half, then?
Yeah, it gets a little bit more constraining on them, or...
Two minutes. They seem to be very efficient in their time, no one actually went the full five minutes, that's impressive.
Yeah. All right, so, is Counselor okay with that, two minutes? Okay, so we'll work one way, and then we'll work the other way, two minutes for each question, all right? So, the two questions for these folks are, please describe your decision-making process and the most difficult decision you have had to make. And number two, what's the one decision/vote passed by council in 2014 that you most agree with or disagree with, and why? We'll start with the first of those, and Matthew, you want to go first?
Sure.
Okay.
Disturbing trend, but...
Off you go.
I'm not scared. Really, you know, always a challenging question, you know, what's the most difficult decision you've ever made? I think for me personally, choosing to go back to university at the age of 30 to secure a master's degree was a bit of a challenging decision. You know, at 30 largely you see a lot of people who are in secure marriages, purchasing homes, having children, doing things like that. And, you know, all those things were very attractive to me, but I still felt I had a higher purpose and bigger goals. So I made the sacrifice and actually moved back to my parents' home in New Hampshire, not in their basement, in my old teenage room that I occupied through high school, and entered into a two-year master's program to secure a degree in teaching. And it was challenging, and, you know, it was part of something bigger, and, you know, I knew I perhaps could have taken an easier path, there was, you know, a strong economy, numerous positions, numerous directions ago, but I felt a calling to give back to the community, get involved in education, and get an advanced degree. And moving home did that, and going back to university at 30 years young was, you know, a difficult decision, and something that, you know, I think took a lot of courage and a lot of consideration. And how I make decisions in 10 seconds is look at the totality of it, look at the outcome, look at the benefit, and how it affects everybody, primarily myself. Thanks.
Thank you. Jerry?
Thank you. The most difficult decision I've had to make recently is where to live. About three years ago, my wife and I had the opportunity to choose where in the country we were going to live. We had many different opportunities, and fortunately we made the right decision, I think. The process we went through was looked at all the different opportunities. I talked with the CEO of the family, my wife, I talked with my parents, her parents, everybody's family. Our families aren't in this area, so there was a little give and take there, and we looked at what would be best for our children, our family, and came to the conclusion that Washington State and Mercer Island would be the best place for us to live.
Terry?
So, the decision-making process, reflecting on that, for me, it really starts with gathering information from as many people as possible, enlisting stakeholders, partners, people who are impacted by a decision that needs to be made. In gathering that information, carefully weighing pros and cons, making a preliminary decision, and then doing a gut check. Because oftentimes, I think, our gut tells us things that our head has forgotten to consider. Then making a decision, and making that decision in a timely way, and then being invested in the success of the decision, and really investing the effort to succeed. The most difficult decision that I've had to make was as a member of our school board, when we made the decision to hire a superintendent, who within eight months we recognized was not the right selection for the seat, and we settled the superintendent's contract. And that was probably the most... And that was probably the most painstaking and agonizing decision I've ever had to make. Despite a really strong and exhaustive selection process, the choice we made didn't turn out to be the right one. Each individual had to make that decision, and we had to make that decision as a board. And there were a lot of short-term negative impacts to that decision, and we were keenly aware of that, impacts to the kids and the staff and to the candidate herself. And the decision had to be influenced not by the short-term pain, but by the long-term appropriateness of the decision. And it was really, really hard, knowing that it was going to be a difficult process and difficult for the community and for everyone involved. I was serving as the president of the board at the time, and it felt to me to be the public face of that decision. I learned a lot in that process. I learned that the right decisions don't make them easy decisions, and don't make those decisions easy to live with. I also learned the importance of what every single member of that board brought to that decision and their unique input into coming to that difficult conclusion.
Thank you. Joy?
The most difficult decision that I've ever had to make was the choice to leave my job and my community that I had back on the East Coast when I realized that my quality of life and my happiness was not very high with that job. I decided to come out here to be closer to family and a college roommate. And the decision-making process that I did, it was many years in the making, it was talking to family members, it was multiple trips out to the Seattle area. It was basically, it's very similar to Terry, lots of information gathering, and it was carefully thought out, and it was very much based on careful consideration of what it would end up meaning to try and sort of start over again at middle age.
All right. Thank you. So, Joy, you want to get to go again first? I'll reread the question, which is, what is the one decision/vote passed by council in 2014 that you most agree with or disagree with and why?
It's maybe a seemingly small one, but it was the decision to end up doing the Transportation Benefit District. It's never easy in order to make a decision to impose new taxes, but the situation that ended up developing in terms of the budget and in terms of the types of services that the TBD is going to be supporting is part of a much larger goal that I believe our community values, as well as both short-term and long-term in terms of its decision-making. The aspect that the Transportation Benefit District touches on is really somewhat small when you consider the full transportation issues that confront our community, whether it's the parking issue that has been so much in the news lately, or the longer-term plans for the light rail coming, the light rail station, the impacts on the town center. And it also touches on the long-term sustainability and the quality of life, for example, the ability to get easily to the major employment centers, as well as entertainment areas in Seattle and Bellevue, and the sustainability of our community by trying to encourage people to end up taking mass transit and to end up moving away solely from being dependent upon their automobiles.
Thank you. Terry?
Well, first, thank you for passing those questions out in advance. It made it a lot easier to really think through and look at the decisions you had made. I'm going to say it was the passage, the recent passage of the Bynneian budget. Budgets are really important, they're really complex, they're difficult decisions. I was really impressed with the thought and the careful analysis that you all put in to pass a balanced budget that reflected our community's values. So balancing a budget is really key for fiscal management, strong fiscal management, and you took the step of raising water rates to ensure that you could address water quality issues. So you made it possible for us to continue to live within our means, and I think that's critically important. Budgets are also moral documents, and you have to fund the things that are most important. So you did that, you know, you funded the police and the fire and the roads and all the things that are so critical to the quality of life. But you were also willing to reprioritize and bring things back into the budget that had been slated perhaps for not being funded in the coming year, and in particular the school counselors issue that I care about really passionately. I was really impressed that the council took that into consideration and added that back into the budget and continued to fulfill the responsibility to pass a balanced budget, but one that reflects our values.
Thank you. Terry?
Okay. The decision I most agree with of council was to postpone the building of the parking garage. I'm new to Mercer Island, and when it was announced, I had never seen so much community activism in my life. My nursery school emailed me, several friends emailed, I don't know all that many people on Mercer Island. About everybody I knew emailed and had an opinion on it. I think it was a really good thing to take a step back and just listen to the people and see what they wanted. I'm not sure what I feel about it, but it seems that the best decision was to take a step back and think about it, so.
All right, thank you. Matthew?
Again, restating the fact that I'm relatively new to Mercer Island and, you know, don't have a tremendous amount of knowledge about many of the issues or longstanding issues. But comparatively, I see Mercer Island, as I stated, in a very similar way to where I grew up on Lake Winnipesaukee in New Hampshire. The importance of open space is something that's very dear to me. And I can also relate to the impact of growth and development and how, over the long term, those can influence and impact the community. So I was impressed with the Colville decision to not allow a large housing development to occur on Mercer Island. I think it's important that we understand that land is finite. Once it's gone, it's not coming back. Once you have a housing development, the forest and the growth and the things that are on a large tract of land are never going to be returned. I saw that in New Hampshire with small fishing cabins and cottages that were bought up by New York celebrities and rock stars, and they bulldozed the footprint and built mega mansions, which was great for the tax base in many ways and helped the local school community, but it really changed the character of the community permanently. So personally, I felt the Colville decision kind of had a similar consideration. How's this going to change us, how's this going to impact the future, besides perhaps lining the pockets of a developer or, you know, a short-term contractor, or the direct employees of that. Great benefits economically, but detrimental, I felt, in the long term.
All right, thank you. Thank you all. You are, you're off the hook for this evening, so.
Thanks, thanks, you too.
All right, Panel B, as it's labeled here, Wendy, Ralph, Andrew, and Steve, come on up. Now you know how this works, yeah, you sit where you want and you'll get your questions in that order. You might want to jockey for... Yeah, so I'll mess with you now, and Ralph, you'll get to start this time. So, and I'll just read the first question. Recall a difficult problem, situation, or conflict you encountered in the workplace. Describe it, and describe how you managed through it. What went well, what went badly? Please be specific. Ralph?
As a serial entrepreneur, there's a common thing that there's two ways for an individual startup company to succeed. The preferred way is to be successful in your market research, your product development, your marketing and your sales. And the second preferred way to succeed is to fail fast. And this eliminates the worst-case scenario where you're essentially treading water and you're not getting anywhere, whether it's due to challenges in your research, your product, or whatever. By definition, many entrepreneurs are optimists, they have significant personal stake in the process, and then an investment of thousands of hours. So as such, it's very easy to stay unconditionally committed to that project, at the expense of future costs, delays, uncompensated time, et cetera. So as such, knowing when to fish and to cut bait is very important, both to financially survive and to rededicate your efforts to the next project. I've had the experience of successfully growing a company out of a garage through marketing and sales and through acquisition. And I've also had the opportunity to start another company that never got out of the garage. And I'd say that was the most difficult decision I've had to make in business. It was a very important decision, not made out of emotion, but using a number of metrics to kind of approximate the likelihood of success. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Wendy?
Hi there. So, a difficult situation at work. Part of my work is employee engagement and trying to get employees to donate their time and money to charities. And when I started my job, we didn't really have a program for that at Puget Sound Energy, so it was my task to figure out how to not only build a program, but also engage employees to give of their valuable time and their resources. So the difficult part was getting the management buy-in above to bring some money to the table to help me get the tools to get that done, and also building a team of people without authority. So I had my influence to try to build this program and build this consensus around employee engagement and giving back to community being a good thing to do. So what I did to address that was do what I do best and reach out to people and talk to people and try to get a common purpose and a shared vision for what this meant for employees in the company. And it took a little bit of time, it took me about a year and a half, to sort of start small and move into a new paradigm throughout the company to get employees to buy into that. And part of the challenge and the difficult part, the most difficult part, was getting leadership to think beyond traditional models of where employees should give, but getting a culture of open giving and giving to what employees care about, not what management cared about. So building those bridges and building that collaboration and changing that paradigm was one of my biggest work challenges.
All right. Andrew?
So, my background is as an attorney working for mostly early-stage and startup companies, which can be a bit of a challenge just in the dynamic environment that that brings. But I had one particularly challenging situation that really strained me and the company in a way that I hoped I'd never experience again. It was a situation where my boss was disagreeing fundamentally with the other senior executives in the company, the CEO in particular, and wasn't, through the traditional channels, convincing him that decisions that were being made were not good and that we should change direction. And at one point, decided to jump over his head and go directly to the Board of Directors and basically try to oust him as a CEO. And for me, this created a real challenge because here I have a loyalty to my immediate supervisor and boss, but also I have a bigger loyalty to the company and the CEO. And so it just created a strange conflict of interests within my own thinking. And the way I kind of dealt with it was, on a day-to-day basis, I was work hard at, you know, the tasks at hand, but at the same time, keeping that bigger perspective and trying to talk down the gossip that naturally happens amongst people with those back-channel discussions that are not healthy and productive within the organization, and just make sure that I maintain a level of personal integrity and encouraged others along those same lines.
Thank you. Steve?
So I tried to think of a situation at work that also involved public policy issues, and one thing that I did here a few years back was I took a leave of absence from Perkins Coie to go up and help Snohomish County Public Utility District to fight Enron. You may recall when there was the power market deregulation crisis and rates started to go up for most of the public utilities. Snohomish had made a contract with Enron, broke the contract. Enron then went bankrupt and sued the PD for over $150 million. And I came into the scene and we thought, what are we going to do? We're in bankruptcy court in New York. People don't have any compassion for debtors in that situation, it's the creditors that mostly run this. So we figured out the way to deal with that would be to work with Senator Cantwell, who had a big interest in these issues. We got passed what was called the Cantwell Amendment to move this out of bankruptcy court into primary jurisdiction with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Well, that sounds good, except if you let that legislation go through, it goes into a conference committee and things die in the conference committee. So the real challenge, we thought, was how do you get that to survive the conference committee? So we finally did, and as a result, we then had to spend the next year and a half before the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, but it turned out okay. The biggest challenge after that was trying to reform the broken markets on the West Coast with the Bonneville Power Administration. But just trying to think through public policy and workplace issues, it takes a whole lot of people trying to think through issues and then reaching out to whatever allies you can get to get the thing done.
Thank you. All right, question two for Panel B is, if appointed to council, what change would you most strive to enact and why? And Steve, you could first crack at that.
Well, it kind of goes along with what I was just talking about. I think the one change that I would suggest for the council, no matter who you choose for this position, would be to reach out more to the state, regional, and other community leaders in this immediate area in the west, on the east side. And I say that because we're literally a small fish in a big pond. And there are a lot of entities out there that would like us to pay tolls, would like us to serve as a bus turnaround, would like to take away center lanes. They would like to do a lot of things for us and to change our character that we're going to have a hard time resisting unless we get out and actually reach out to the governor's office, to the legislators, to the key committees. I mentioned in my opening remark that we needed to figure out, how do you pay for 520? Is it going to be a gas tax, is it going to be something else? How do we help make that happen? Because if we don't, people will make things happen to us. So appearing at the Puget Sound Regional Council, working with people at the city of Seattle, their council members, their mayor, the east side mayors and councils, I know we've done some of that, and actually we've probably done a lot of it compared to what we did years ago, but I think we need to even do more, or else we're going to be at the short end of a public policy stick. You know, we're between two great freeways and we're right along sitting on top of the third one. That's immense pressure for high-density development. Is that the character that we want for the Mercer Island residents here? We need to find out, but I think that most people would probably say now, look, we'd better do this the right way. You better reach out to people, and if that's not the character you want, how do you intervene to make it so that it doesn't happen? Or if it's going to happen, how do you make it happen the best way possible?
Thank you. Andrew?
I don't come with a strong agenda that I want to come in and make any strong changes. I think that the council so far has been doing an amazing job, and, you know, it's the typical issues that a lot of the residents and my friends are talking about, you know, it's maintaining the quality of life that we've got here on Mercer Island, and that being, you know, between these two major pressure zones of economic interest that we can get kind of stuck between. The water quality is obviously a big issue for the island and maintaining that and/or improving on that just so we don't run into any more issues like we suffered. And as a cyclist, to me, a big priority is the transportation and maintaining the roads and the access to getting around by bike and safety related to that as well.
All right. Thank you. Wendy?
So I think the issue that I would most like to address is the EOC. I love the idea of an emergency operations center. We use that quite a bit at work and it comes in handy during storms and incidences. And I was surprised during the water boil advisory that we didn't already have one. So I think getting one together quickly because we don't know what emergency might happen next is critical. And part of that is enhanced communications to residents. This past Christmas, I finally got my 74-year-old mother to figure out how to use a text. And there are seniors that really need to have better access to the information and maybe not social media, but at least through the cell phones they're now carrying around. I know the younger generations are carrying them around all the time. My kids are on their phones constantly. But we need to sort of enhance our emergency communications and take advantage of the channels that are there through social media, through our newsletters, through our websites, and through whatever channels that are going to come online with the new applications that are going to come through. So I would be most excited to be working on that because I think, again, being safe and having a safe community and knowing that all of our neighbors and residents are safe is the most critical reason that we're here.
Thank you. Ralph?
My interest in serving as city council member is not driven by a special issue, rather a broader spectrum of community priorities. And as such, I would have to just list the priorities I've already mentioned. Public safety, preserving and continuing to foster our unique and precious community and infrastructure. However, I would like to continue to strive, as you are, to build trust in this council, in which you have. And, you know, if you can build trust in a community organization, you can do wonders. And, you know, being thoughtful, being responsive to the community, engaging the public, being transparent, and just affording many opportunities for public input. Having moved from Seattle to here, it was just really refreshing to be able to come to the city council and help organize my neighbors to do some traffic calming and actually have it done. And I could never imagine trying to do that in Seattle. So it's really neat to have such a responsive city government. And just kind of building on that, you know, the things that we could achieve. I was at the Washington State Convention Center today and I'd like to quote a plaque that was standing there. It recognizes one of Seattle's most notable community advocates, Jim Ellis, who I believe was very responsible for cleaning up Lake Washington, the 1960s Ford Thrust initiatives and the Washington State Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust. And his quote was, "Bridges of community can be built over all the roadblocks and ditches. We are, after all, neighbors who care about each other and have learned to love the same place." So I thought that speaks to what we can achieve. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for your relief to responsibility this evening. Much appreciated your time and thank you. And that brings up the remaining folks, Bradley, Megan, and Carl. Come on up.
You need this for like invited guests?
Yeah, well, we'll have Ed come up and join you. You can speak to Bradley while he's there.
I think they're asking on the first question. Role relative to city staff.
Okay. So question one. Please describe how you see the council's role relative to city staff and in particular your role as a council member. Carl, why don't you go first?
I'm kind of fortunate on this one. I had the opportunity to spend about four years in director of communications at a large judicial agency down in South Florida. And the kind of government was exactly that. It was a board of supervisors and a county manager. And it was wonderful to watch the interaction, not having been part of it, in the areas where things worked and the areas where they didn't work. My personal philosophy would be that as a city council member, it's advice and consent. You're a member of the board of directors, not there to manage or micromanage anybody. If I were fortunate enough to be appointed, first thing I'd do is I'd ask for some time with you, Noel, and say, Noel, tell me what I need to learn. And then I'd ask for the right to talk to the department heads and say, Noel, tell me what I need to learn and tell me how, as a council member, I can help you be more productive, do your job better. But that's about it.
Bradley?
I view the council's role as expressing the will of the people and the city staff's as executing that will. I believe the important part is the communication between the council and the city staff. The council making sure that the city is living up to its expectations and is executing what is expected properly. And vice versa, that the city staff manages the expectations of the council. There are different views on different angles of the same topic, but each is important and each needs to coexist with the other.
Thank you.
I would second what my table mate say. In general, council consists of leaders that the voters put in place to manage the city and its operations, but loosely manage. I see council's role as guiding the work of the city and serving as a voice of the residents. Paired with that, I see council's role as almost ambassadors to both the residents on behalf of the city, but then also to the city on behalf of the residents. As a council member, I would treat that relationship as such. So working with Noel, getting to know the departments, getting to know the work that the city does and having that loose relationship. A great example of kind of this ambassadorship that I'm talking about happened just a few months ago with the E. coli incident. I was both impressed and really quite informed with the council member communications I received and also the city communications I received with the water boil notice. The city used new channels to communicate with all of the residents and then also island visitors about this. And that focus, repetitive messaging, made me trust that the city had a handle on the situation and was working in my best interests and in the best interests of my neighbors.
All right. Thank you. Last question. Other than issues that the law requires to be submitted for voter approval, what issues, if any, should the council first ask voters to weigh in on before adopting? And Megan, you could first shout that.
The council is elected by the residents to represent them in their best interests on matters of the city. As such, I think it's important that the council use that power to make these decisions. A good example of this was that $20 vehicle licensing fee that the Transportation Benefit District passed this year to pay for transportation infrastructure. I know from my years of experience at King County elections that elections are very costly for jurisdictions to hold, with a lot of planning and coordination needed leading up to even just putting the issue on the ballot. So it's something that really needs to, as good stewards of the city's resources, it's something that we need to be very diligent about putting, what issues to put on the ballot. As representatives of the city, it's the job of the council members to seek out comments from all residents on these issues so that they are well-informed when making votes, not making votes, but taking votes on these important issues. This could be in the form of public comment at meetings like this one or the one we were at last night, as well as over the phone or email or other public forums. I believe that there are other channels that, as a city and as a council, can be explored to seek additional public comment from our residents so that the council members are fully informed when making their decisions.
Thank you.
I believe the council as an elected body has the right to make decisions within law. I also believe they have a responsibility to understand what the community may be feeling about certain issues and to weigh that in. So clearly, if there are controversial, expensive, long-term projects, it is up to the city council to know when it's appropriate and necessary to bring those to a vote.
Thank you. Carl?
I'm just philosophically opposed to government by referendum. If you don't like the government, people don't like it, vote them out, get rid of them. Come November, there'll be five of the seven seats up for election. If the populist doesn't like what's going on, you put new people in there. Government by referendum is an opportunity for people to subvert the real democratic process. That's not the way it was set up. The best way to avoid that is develop that relationship with the voters. And we've all talked about engaging people, but that relationship with voters, it's very, very special. It's a sacred trust that all of you have. And you just don't go out and do things in your own life without checking with your partner and it's the same thing with the voters. So you go out and you ask and engage people and find out what's in their mind, but voting by referendum, you know, why not just replace the whole council, give everybody a laptop and, you know, we know, we'll just vote like that. It allows people with a lot of money to have undue influence and that's not the way democracy operates. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Now, it occurs to me that we gave you all of the questions and asked you to prep for all of them, then you only answered two. So I would guess that some of you were feeling a little stymied in that you have rip-roaring answers for four more and you didn't get to share them with us. Those are an opportunity for you to have a conversation one-on-one with council members and let them know what you think. So don't feel that necessarily gone to waste that you prepped on other questions. Those are, they are certainly questions of interest to us as council members since we put them together. We certainly are interested in your resumes and all the other facts there and we'll be spending time reading through those and thinking about the traits and characteristics you each bring to this in the coming days. But having conversations with you where they can be scheduled will be another part of that. And then we come to next week and it is next week? Two weeks. So at that point, we will have the selection moment at our meeting on the 20th, I believe. Council members, anything else for this evening? Are we...
Just on the planning session, since most of you have never gone to a city council planning session, it is the following weekend and it's one of the most critical things that we do as a council because we really talk about our work plan for the entire year and some very substantive issues. So it starts Friday at 3:00, goes through the evening through dinner. It's all day Saturday, including dinner, and probably Sunday morning. So if you can make sure you keep your schedules open for that weekend, it would really be appreciated because it's really critical that the person who's chosen actually be able to attend the planning session.
Good point. Anything else? Benson?
I think the community is so well-served by each one of you who's come out and put your name out there and it takes a lot of courage to put yourself out and to come under scrutiny. So I just personally want to thank you for that. I think I always say that for the community as a whole. I think the mayor just mentioned that we are blessed to have a deep bench and you guys are part of the community. And certainly, no matter what happens, I encourage everybody to stay involved and engaged because you have a lot to offer the community. So thank you again.
Jane?
Well, I want to underscore what Benson said. I think we have an impossible task here and 11 incredibly qualified people. I am so impressed with your answers, your resumes, your experience. I think we could throw everybody's names in and pick out somebody and have just as wonderful a result as we will when we finally do choose. And I don't know how that will happen, but I was in your position before, four years ago, and I felt blessed to be selected and I had, I feel like this is a very tough job. And I hope that everyone does stay involved because only one person will be chosen, but there'll be other opportunities and lots of ways to serve this community. And it's really wonderful to see so many people interested and involved.
Anyone else? Debbie, Mike, do you have any comments? Nope. All right then. Noel, anything else? Then we are adjourned. Thank you again very much for putting this all together this evening for us.